Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Brisbane City Council Meeting of October 12, 2017. We'll start off with a call to order. Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
Adoption of agenda.
Move adoption.
Is there a second?
I'd like to add that we close in memory of the victims from the Las Vegas attack.
Okay. And let's add to it the fires.
Also the victims of fire.
There's been a lot of tragedy going on.
That's certainly ongoing.
Okay, okay, and with that change, all those in favor?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have an agenda. Oral communications, number one. This is a chance to speak on items not on the agenda. I do have several slips from people for items on the agenda. When we get to that, we will call you. But for items not on the agenda, we have Eileen Straw.
Hello. This is my first time at a Brisbane City Council meeting, so thank you for giving me the opportunity, especially the first one. My issue has to do with a letter that I sent, and hopefully, the board has received. I think Cliff received it. It was sent on August 25th, and then a request for feedback on 10-5. I have received a response from the Chief of Police, but it doesn't address the issues. So, a show of hands. Everybody know what I'm talking about? Cool.
We do.
Do you want to let the audience?
You should let the public know.
Okay. I live up on the ridge, and there's excessive noise going on with the businesses below where we live. I've been there since 1997, 98, and I just feel like there's unresponsiveness when we call with regards to the noise, zizz, when we call with regards to the parking of trucks, when we call to the parking of trucks and no parking, when we call with regards to, please come out and send a unit. I don't want to stand up here and trash the police department, but you did see my letter. I have photos. There is subjective enforcement going on. I was running up on South Hill, and there's semi trucks that park up there also with the engines running. So, there's open issues with the people up at the ridge. And Cliff, thank you for coming up. He was campaigning, and we kind of corralled around him. And he made a suggestion that perhaps we get a committee of people from the ridge and express our concerns, so that it's just not one person, and see what we can do about it. Cliff shared that I have a concern with Greenleaf, being that it seems to be a 24-hour operation. But now we have Amazon Fresh coming. I'm a stockholder of Amazon. I think Amazon's great, but not underneath my bedroom window. Beep, 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 constantly all night long, along with car alarms going off, trucks parked on valley, engines running. It's not a new issue. I've worked with the code enforcer. She's been instrumental in bright lights and some additional noise. But I teed it up with the chief, with the District 5 supervisor, and with the city council, because I need additional resources. I need your help. If you can't provide it, let me know. Any questions?
Thank you, Eileen, for coming. I really appreciate it. We did receive your email, and I saw that our police chief was responding, and so I thought that...
The police chief did respond. It did not address the issues.
Okay. Well...
And I'm here. I'm a resident. You have my phone number. Photos, videos are available. Whatever I can do, if you need a voice up at the ridge, I'm willing.
Okay, great. Well, we appreciate you bringing this to our attention. I live up at the ridge too, and I know noise can be an issue from Crocker Park. And your letter very clearly dealt with the noise. It was very precise, and I could tell perhaps you have a background in that type of work. So, I appreciate the detail you put into it.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Eileen. Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask our city manager a question. So, Clay, we had a meeting, the two of us, after I had spoken with Eileen and some of the other residents up at the ridge about potentially creating an ad hoc committee to address some of the issues at the ridge. And so, you know, I've also reached out to the mayor too about perhaps maybe forming an ad hoc committee, you know, to do that. Do we need to agendize it, or is that something that we can do tonight?
Normally, you would agendize that, and we could put that on the next available agenda and have a council discussion. It's probably helpful to have some discussion around how you would see that committee working and what sort of resources you want for that, and we can kind of talk about that in the interim too. But we could put it on the next agenda, which is actually November, or October 26th.
Okay, you know, that'd be great. That'd be okay, Madam Mayor?
That's fine with me. And in the meantime, we'll be in touch with you certainly to just make sure that your concerns are addressed. Okay, great. Okay, next oral communications. Michelle Salmon.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident, and Eileen said a very apt phrase, "subjective enforcement." I agree with her, and I've called and complained about trucks idling. That's subjective enforcement that doesn't happen. But the subjective enforcement that I want to talk about tonight is the damn dirt piles. They are definitely higher than 75 feet. I've complained about them, and complained about them, and complained about them, and nothing happens. And now, we even want to condone it by charging sales tax on something that's not really sellable at this point. I'm really upset about it. Why don't we have enforcements? I've spoken about this for years, years, literally years. I've come up here and talked about this. Dust blows off of it. I call Bay Area Air Quality Management District. First name basis with Dick, who responds to the calls. You know, I complain about dust from the quarry. Subjective enforcement. Brisbane's supposed to be overseeing that, even though it's county. And so, why subjective enforcement? Why aren't we doing something about the dirt piles? Is it because we get so much money in trucking fees? Does that mean the law doesn't apply anymore? Just like people who park on the street for months and months and don't move their vehicle, and it's not registered? The law doesn't apply anymore? Subjective enforcement is a problem in Brisbane. And we need to enforce the ordinances and the laws that we have, and I want to see those dirt piles enforced. I am just really deeper in it than the dirt is high with anger about it and upset about it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Can I ask a question of staff?
Sure.
Clay, could you summarize the current status of what's going on out there? I know you and I had a conversation recently, because I too was, you know, kind of angered by how they just continuously seem to grow out of nowhere and don't seem to get smaller. So, I know that there's been kind of some updates, which aren't necessarily great, but I think it's important for the community to be informed on, you know, what's the status.
Sure. So, as of October 2nd, their import operation was closed down. So, they're no longer importing dirt onto the site. We have met with them. There are some piles that do exceed the 75 feet, and we have talked to them and instructed them that that needs to be addressed, and those piles need to be taken down. And so, they're in the process of putting together a plan to do that or doing the work. You may still see some work happening out there, but it's not material being imported. The council's ad hoc subcommittee is going to be meeting on this issue, I think, not next week, but the week after, I believe.
It's next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Next, is it the 17th or 18th? Okay. You're right. That is true. So, we'll have an update to provide subsequent to that. I think it's just important to kind of note that, you know, when the memorandum of agreement was put together on the current operation, there was an anticipation on the property owner's part that there would be not only a robust import operation, but a robust export operation. And for a variety of reasons, that export operation has not happened, and there is not material going off of that, off of the site, which basically means now that they're, until they can get some of that material exported, there is going to be no import. So, I think we're kind of at at least a standstill in terms of any additional material coming. The issue really now is trying to come up with a strategy to force, you know, some of that material to come off of there. I do want to correct one of the comment that was made by the speaker. There is no sales tax measure. What it is, is a gross receipts business license measure that has a minimum payment also, I think, $200,000. That's before the voters in November. It's not a sales tax.
Can you speak to the fine incurred every day that that property owner is in violation of the height limit?
Well, that's something we're going to talk to the subcommittee about. The, we do have municipal court code language that allows us to apply fines for being out of compliance with municipal codes. The city attorney is taking a look at that issue, and, you know, we'll report back to you on that part of it also.
Okay, thank you.
Great, good questions. Thank you, Madison. Okay, so I have no more slips. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on oral communications? Okay, moving on. Item five, proclamation, declaring October 2017 as Fire Prevention Month. Unfortunately, a very timely declaration. Why don't you come on up? Okay, so again, I have a proclamation. Would you like to say a few words first, or?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead. Introduce yourself.
Well, members of the city council, thank you for having us here this evening and declaring October Fire Prevention Month here in the city of Brisbane. Obviously, we have a lot of activities, as usual, every year for this month to promote fire safety awareness.
Say the least.
One of the things we're doing is we are mirroring with the National Fire Protection Association, the NFPA, and this year's theme is "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out." And this is a message that we are taking to all of our schools here in Brisbane, as well as Daly City and Pacifica, and educating the schoolchildren about this. And one of the important things about this is that, you know, we become kind of creatures of habit. When we come through the front door, we want to go out the front door. And for years, I've always told people, you know, crawl low under smoke if there's a fire and get out, and that is important. That's a very good thing to do. But the other thing we have to realize is that there may be times when you can't crawl low. There is too much smoke, and you're choking and gagging, and we don't want people to breathe that in. So, we want people to do is if that happens in your bedroom, go back in your bedroom, close the bedroom door, open the bedroom window, and if possible, climb out the bedroom window. Now, obviously, you wouldn't want to do that if it's a two- or three-story home, like some of the ones we have in Brisbane. But we're trying to educate people that the front door, the main exit you come in, may not always be the best way. So, always know two ways out, or any part of your house, the dining room door, fan room door, different ways to get out of your house. So, we will be taking that to the schools and helping to educate the schoolchildren about that, as well as all the other fire safety messages that we do continuously. We'd also like to invite all of you and the members of the community. This Saturday will be our annual Fire Service Day Open Houses, and Brisbane Station 81 will be one of them that will be open, as well as three of our Daly City stations and one of our Pacifica stations, and that'll be this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So, we invite everybody and everyone watching at home to come on out. We'll have demonstrations and fire safety talks and things like that to help educate the community, so.
Great. Great. Well, thank you so much. And I also want to point out that our fire department has been lending support. I understand we've sent an engine to the wine country, so we want to express our gratitude for that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if we have, could we get an update? Could you give the community an update on what's actually going on? Because I know the schools and stuff, that our air quality here is affected, you know, horrendously, and it almost seems like there's a fire here, you know, with the way it is.
Yeah, especially today. Today was, in my opinion, was probably the worst. They even had ash on my car over at the Daly City Headquarters Fire Station. So, one of the things we did, obviously, we're doing our part as far as the North County Fire Authority. We have 11 of our firefighters over there, four of our chief officers, including our fire chief, Ron Myers, who's also there taking command and assisting with the operations, and including Brisbane Engine 81, which is over there. Now, one of the things I was, when I was preparing here tonight, I want to let everybody know that we backstaff, okay? So, even though the primary engine 81 is over there, we have a reserve fire engine 81. So, when you call 911, Brisbane is still fully staffed, and the other Daly City stations are all fully staffed. We're backfilling those stations. So, we're still providing the same level of fire protection that we've always provided, even though we are sending crews over there. As far as any updates on where they are with the fire, it's very hard. They're up in the hills. They're doing their things. I don't really have an update on that, but I can tell you that's what, those are the resources we've sent there, and they're doing everything they can. A lot of evacuations and things like that, and obviously, that started in the very beginning. We've got to get the people out of the houses. The fires are going, we're going through there very quickly. So, a lot of evacuations, getting people out and doing things like that. So, that's about the only thing I have to report back on that.
Yeah, the fire happened so rapidly, I mean, that, you know, a lot of people, you know, some people just didn't even make it out. You know, they were still asleep, and, you know, that, can you kind of talk a little bit about what happened there?
Well, you know, one of the things, there was two things that happened, and then obviously, this is a very rare occurrence from what we're seeing and happening up there, is there's two things. One is very low humidity and very high winds. When you have the reports that we receive 50 to 70 mile-per-hour winds, that is tremendous. And when fire gets going, it starts catching other things on fires, and you also have the embers, I'm sorry, excuse me, I lost her, embers flying all over the neighborhood, catching other fires, other things on fire, whether it be bushes and trees and cars and things like that. It's like a firestorm. One of the things, you know, I did was, you know, go to some of the videos, and you see people that actually took the actual videos that night, and it was just like a firestorm, is all I can describe it, what was going on there. And it's just, it starts going, and it's just, it's like a freight train flowing through, and it's kind of unstoppable at times. And so, when you look at that type of situation, the fact, main function goes from not putting out fires, just getting people out of their houses and trying to get ahead of it fast enough to evacuate people. Obviously, it's very hard to do, going and pounding on doors and PA systems and things like that to try to do that. And I understand a lot of that happened in the middle of the night, which is very, very difficult too, to wake people up and get them out of their houses. But the high, very, very high winds and low humidity were really a contributing factor to that, and it doesn't, you know, it doesn't seem that normal up in that area. And I have relatives that live up there. And, you know, the areas that I saw that were affected, you know, one of the things I did Monday was, you know, they were watching the news at work and at lunchtime, seeing on the news the area that had been devastated. I went to Google and looked at that area, and it wasn't an area that was up in the Sierras or up in the mountains and tree area. These were, these were flatland areas, single families, suburban homes with streets and fire hydrants and street trees and lawns and everything you'd see in a, just a normal neighborhood. It wasn't a wildland urban interface area, which was just very shocking to see the tremendous effects of that happening, so.
Yeah. Well, it's just a reminder to us all to make sure we have a bag packed to go in case we need to evacuate.
Grab-and-go bag, and, you know, your pets, your children, food, medications, important documents and things like that, you know, to have. And have copies of that. You have copies of that in your house. You don't need to take the actual insurance papers or important, you know, birth certificates and all that kind of stuff. You can make copies of those things and things like that. But, you know, even the other night, I just, like I said, I have some relatives that live up there, and their house wasn't affected, but they are, they're still on full alert, and they're ready to go. And it kind of made me walk around my house and go, well, what would I take? What personal family heirlooms and pictures and belongings and stuff? And it is a very scary thought. It really made me think, and this is the business I'm in, but we kind of take it for granted. We live in a very nice area like this. We don't have situations like that, but it is really something to think about, so, yeah.
Well, let me go ahead and read the proclamation. "A proclamation of the city of Brisbane declaring October 2017 as Fire Prevention Month. Whereas the city of Brisbane, California, and the North County Fire Authority are committed to ensuring the safety and security of all these, all those living in and visiting Brisbane. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires kill thousands of people in the United States each year, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States respond to over 370,000 home fires. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in home fires in half, and three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without a working smoke alarm and in one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms. None were working." Wow. "And whereas when smoke alarms should have operated but did not do so, it was usually because batteries were missing, disconnected, or dead. And whereas half of home fire deaths result from fires reported at night between 11:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., when most people are asleep. And whereas Brisbane and North County Fire Authority recommend and request residents to install smoke alarms in every sleeping room outside of each sleeping, separate sleeping area and on every level of the home. And whereas Brisbane and North County Fire Authority recommend and request residents to install smoke alarms and alert devices that meet the needs of people who are deaf or hard of hearing. And whereas Brisbane and North County Fire Authority recommend and request that residents practice a home fire escape plan, making them prepared and therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Brisbane and North County Fire Authority are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and associated deaths and injuries through public education and community outreach. And whereas Brisbane's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out", effectively serves to remind us why everyone needs to have an escape plan. Therefore, I, Lori Lou, Mayor of Brisbane, do hereby proclaim October 2017 as Fire Prevention Month throughout this city, and I urge all the people of Brisbane to plan two exits from each room of your home with a path to the outside from each exit. Please support the many public safety activities and efforts of North County Fire Authority during Fire Prevention Month 2017."
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And let's all give our firefighters a round of applause.
Just to note that we also have sent up police staff to the fire area also.
That's correct. Yes, all our emergency responders are definitely doing their part. So, now, we get to move on to, oh, one more thing before I move on. With respect to the fires that are happening up in the wine country, I had asked, because I know that a lot of residents and other groups in town are organizing collection of donations, I've asked our city if we can do something at City Hall. So, I'd like our city manager to report on that, or Stuart.
Yes, so our recreation coordinator, Ricardo Monroy, is working with Joe Friars of the Public Works Department to get bins set up for, to take donations, and then we will take that up to the people in North County, in Marin, who need it. We are still working to figure out where the best place to put those bins are, since, you know, if you put them into City Hall itself, you won't be able to make any donations over the weekend, because we're closed. So, you know, we're looking at maybe doing it outside City Hall or maybe potentially at the fire station.
Okay.
It's just a matter of where we think the traffic would be best, be able to be handled.
Yeah. From what I've heard, people are really being generous with the donations, so I suggest wherever we have it, we have a large site available.
So, that's what we're looking to get that worked out, and as we do get that worked out, we'll put out an announcement through our weekly, the email list that we usually do, and if we can, we'll get it signed up on the signboard.
At this point, have any of the affected counties put out a request for items? Because I've heard that a lot of the donation centers are overwhelmed with items, and they're not in the position yet to be able to disperse those items. So, is there, if there's something that is in particular need, I think that would be good to let our residents know if we could reach out to one of the other, to the affected areas and their resource coordinators.
Right. We'll have Ricardo make that connection.
One more thing. And I don't, I don't know if this is helpful, but there was a time when Madhouse did have a receptacle for coat donations. So, if you are looking for kind of a well-trafficked area on visitation, then I'm sure we could work out something in the parking lot if you guys were looking for a space and you couldn't find one on city property. You know, I'm sure we'll be willing to work something out on, in our parking lot, if that's helpful.
Great. Thank you, Madison.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so moving on. Next, I have the honor of bestowing the award for Volunteer of the Year. So, at the Day in the Park on Saturday, the award was formally given out, and now we have a proclamation. So, the recipient, now she knows who she is. It's our very own Rachel Ennis. And before, or you can come up if you'd like, actually, and I'll just say a few words introducing you. So, each year, the Volunteer of the Year Award is bestowed upon a dedicated community member that has demonstrated ongoing commitment to the city of Brisbane. They act with the purpose of community in mind and give self... They act with the purpose of community in mind and give selflessly to others. This year's recipient has worked tirelessly for the community and the Brisbane School District. When her daughter started attending Silver Spot Co-op Preschool, she quickly became a strong leader and joined this, their school board as treasurer and then president. She started new fundraising events and gave direction to improve the financial health and stability of the school. She then followed her daughter to Brisbane Elementary School, where she gave many years of service as BES Site President, Best PTO Board Member, Chairman, founding Spring Thing Auction Chair, and Spring Thing Co-Chair. If someone had an idea, she would always listen. If a group was struggling to raise donations, she always had the time and the best ideas. If you needed a cheerleader, she would be your biggest supporter and advocate. She even got the beer and wine garden at Day in the Park started. Not only does she volunteer for the schools, but she volunteers her time and donates wonderful delectable foods to support the Brisbane Dance Workshop, the Live at Mission Blue Series, and other local community groups. For those who nominated her, they say that she always brings the most positive and upbeat energy. Her selfish and dedicated service has made a significant difference in our community. The work that she does and the positive impact she's had on the school district and the community will not soon be forgotten. And so for that, we have awarded, and we would like to express our gratitude by, um, recognizing the Volunteer of the Year Award for Rachel Ennis. So I have a proclamation. Um, I can read that, but why don't I give you a chance to say a few words?
I just want to thank my family for letting me have the sign up sheet a lot and letting me run with it, so thank you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Okay, so I'll go ahead and read the proclamation and then I can give it to you. A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Brisbane, recognizing Rachel Ennis for her volunteer service to the City of Brisbane. Whereas Rachel Ennis is a tireless volunteer for the Brisbane School District and an active Brisbane resident for twelve years. And whereas Rachel Ennis is known throughout the community for her contributions in many areas, such as to education, child development, literacy, arts, and culture, and is devoted to personally improving the quality of life for Brisbane students and families. And whereas Rachel Ennis has donated countless hours of service as Brisbane Elementary School Site President, Brisbane Elementary Support Team, Parent Teacher Organization, or Best PTO Board Member and Chairperson, and founding Spring Thing Auction Chair. And whereas Rachel Ennis volunteers her time and donates wonderful delectable food items to support the Brisbane Dance Workshop, the Live at Mission Blue Series, Friends of the Brisbane Library, Silver Spot Co-op Preschool, and many other local community groups. And whereas Rachel Ennis always extends a helping hand and acts with the purpose of community in mind when she gives selflessly to others. And now therefore be it resolved that after decades of dedicated volunteering, we take this opportunity to express our gratitude to Rachel Ennis for her tireless spirit, great energy, and passion for serving others. Congratulations to Rachel Ennis on being named the City of Brisbane's Volunteer of the Year for two thousand seventeen.
Thank you.
I think we have two or three other past recipients in the audience tonight also.
Yeah. It's always a tough choice. So many great people. Okay.
Get your name on a rock out front here.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. We have items A, B, and C.
Move adoption.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, consent calendar is approved. Moving on to next item, public hearing, item A. It's, it's the Appeal of the Planning Commission Decision, thirty-six to fifty San Bruno Avenue, Appeal of Use Permit, UP two seventeen, Design Permit, DP dash O one dash seventeen, and Grading Permit, EX dash four dash seventeen. Appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of the above referenced application for a three-story mixed-use building with sixteen one-bedroom senior apartments, apartment units, and four hundred sixty-four square feet of ground floor commercial space and a ground floor parking garage on a ninety-five-hundred-and-five-foot, square foot lot currently occupied by a surface parking lot, NCRO two, zoning district, James Trotter, applicant, Horsepower Holdings LLC owner, and Denise Gregory is the appellant. So just by way of introduction, let me give you a rundown of how this is going to go. So here are the steps that we'll be taking regarding the appeal of Planning Commission's approval of the thirty-six fifty San Bruno Avenue permit applications. First, city staff will present the staff report. We will then open the public hearing after the staff presentation with the appellant Denise C. Gregory and the project sponsor, James W. Trotter, will go first, followed by any member of the public who wishes to be heard on this item. All members of the public who wish to address the council and discuss the issues pertaining to the appeal will have up to five minutes to speak. So with that, we'll start off with the staff report, please.
Yes, thank you. This item is before the City Council on Appeal of the Planning Commission's Approval of the Proposed Senior Housing Mixed-Use Development at thirty-six to fifty San Bruno Avenue. On August twenty-second, the Planning Commission approved the design permit and use permit applications for this project. They also recommended that the city engineer approve the proposed grading. The commission's decision was appealed by Denise Gregory of ninety-nine San Bruno Avenue. Ms. Gregory's residence is across the street and, um, is, is shown on the image there. And I'll, I'll discuss her appeal a little bit further in a moment. First, by way of background, the proposal is for a new mixed-use building within the downtown neighborhood commercial zoning district. A use permit is required within this zoning district for residential uses, which may only be located above and behind ground floor commercial uses. A design permit is required for the construction of a new principal structure in the district. And Planning Commission review of grading is required since the project would include over fifty cubic yards of exported material. The site is currently comprised of an unutilized and roped-off surface parking lot. The site area is approximately nineteen, excuse me, nine thousand five hundred square feet in area. The parking lot historically served the Twenty-three Club since it has been under the same ownership over the years. However, the Twenty-three Club is a separate property and is not part of this proposal and there is no legal instrument or code requirement tying the two properties together. Briefly, I'll summarize the proposed development. It would include a three-story building with sixteen one-bedroom senior apartments on the second and third floors. Those range from, um, about five-twenty-five to five-forty, uh, square feet. Those second and third floors would be in two building segments on the interior, with an interior courtyard area over the top of the ground floor commercial space and parking garage. The commercial space would be comprised of two areas located on either side of the driveway to the parking garage. And the parking garage would include fourteen parking spaces, eleven for the residents and three for guests. At its high point, the building would be approximately, well, would be thirty-two feet, three inches in height, and that's at the northeast corner. And then it would drop in height to approximately twenty-six and a half feet at its southwest corner. It would have outdoor landscaping and a rear patio area totaling approximately twenty-four hundred square feet. That's in addition to the interior courtyard area above the garage. The scale of the building would be similar to other multi-unit buildings within this district and would be less than the thirty-five-foot height limit that may be permitted for the district. The lot coverage is at seventy-three percent versus ninety percent limit on the lot coverage that's allowed for the district. So that's approximately sixteen hundred square feet less than the lot coverage maximum. So the proposal does not attempt to go to the limits on either the height or lot coverage allowed for the district. The architectural style of the building is Art Deco borrowing from other buildings in the neighborhood. And I understand the applicant has, has a PowerPoint as well and, and he may touch further on that. In the appeal, the appellant states that the project does not adhere to the municipal code sections that are listed here as reasons for her appeal. And that's as detailed in your agenda report. These code sections state the purpose of the zoning title as a whole and the purpose of the parking ordinance as a whole. As a practical matter, the first section is implemented through the development standards and the findings for the granting of a use permit and design permit. Similarly, the general purposes of the second code cited here are implemented through the minimum requirements for off-street parking as contained in the parking ordinance. As indicated in the agenda report, the proposed project meets the zoning district design standards and parking standards and meets all the findings for approval of the permits. I should note that there was a design standard concession granted for the rear setback area. That was for the building to be as close as one foot from the rear lot line where ten feet would normally be required. Given the irregular rear lot line, the setback would range then from one foot to nearly nineteen feet with landscaping screening to be provided there. Under the state's density bonus law, the city has an obligation to grant the requested concession. This state law would apply to housing projects with inclusion of either five percent, very low-income housing, or ten percent, low-income housing. This project meets both of those standards and would be deed restricted accordingly for a thirty-year term as specified by state law. That deed restriction would be in addition to the deed restriction for all of the units to be dedicated to senior housing, and those are defined in the city ordinance as sixty-two years of age or older. In the appellant's public comments at the Planning Commission and in her follow-up correspondence to City Council, she also indicated that the scale of the building, light, view blockage, parking, and traffic were also of concern. So I'll briefly touch on, on those. First, with regards to the size or scale of the building, uh, it would fit well within the NCRO district, which actually allows for higher buildings, as I mentioned, and greater lot coverage. Staff provided examples of those similar, um, buildings with similar height in that neighborhood at the Planning Commission, and we can reference those, um, in the question period after if you like. These include thirty-five San Bruno Avenue and one San Bruno Avenue, as well as a, um, recently approved twenty-three San Bruno Avenue, which is directly across the street, all of which go up to three-story. That being said, the scale of the proposed building would not have an adverse effect on either the single-family residences adjacent to the site, to the south, nor to the appellant's property, which is across the, the street to the southeast. The proposed building is to the north of these properties, um, or, or northeast, northwest, excuse me, and so they will still receive southern exposure. Regarding views, private views of San Bruno Mountain or other city views are not protected by ordinance. Finally, on the subjects of parking and traffic, the proposal meets the parking standards as provided in the city's parking ordinance. Again, the development would provide fourteen onsite spaces per the ordinance, plus there would be some onsite street parking retained. The formula for this is point six-seven spaces per unit at this size for senior housing. This is less than the one-to-one that would normally be required, and that's based on the city's, uh, ordinance that was just adopted a couple of years ago. Plus, there's the additional requirement for guest parking. For small commercial spaces that are part of this proposal, the street parking is recognized by the municipal code as meeting the requirement. There is no off-street parking requirement. Potential impacts for traffic were studied by the city's consultant, LSA, and that report was provided in, with the Planning Commission Agenda Report as well as with your packet. And it concluded that the profit, the project-generated traffic trips were not considered significant. In summary, the proposed project complies with the zoning and parking ordinance and meets all the required findings for approval. It would fit well with the neighborhood in terms of its scale, design style, and uses of providing for new senior housing, as well as the, the small commercial spaces consistent with the code. Before I close, I just want to mention that council has correspondence from the community, quite a number of letters, and many of those were included in your packet, and then there have been some more that have been added later. In closing, staff recommends that the City Council uphold the Planning Commission's decision and deny the appeal via adoption of Resolution twenty seventeen dash forty-nine.
Thank you. So at this point, we will open the public hearing and hear from the appellant Denise Gregory.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Liu, council members, planning commission members, developers, and neighbors. I'm here to appeal the action by the Planning Commission on August twenty-second, approving the three-story mixed-use building at thirty-six through fifty San Bruno Avenue. I first learned about this development one and a half weeks before the Planning Commission's review and subsequent approval of it. I had no clue about the protocol for addressing concerns and no time to study or form an educated opinion about the development. That brings us to this appeal, which has delayed the developers' timeline, and for that I apologize. The proposed building is approximately thirty-two feet high, has sixteen senior, senior housing units, and four commercial spaces. There will be thirteen, well, now I just found out fourteen, off-street parking spaces. Based on the letters written to the Planning Commission and the neighboring residents with whom I have spoken and my own personal feelings, senior housing is needed, low-income units are very important, and the San Bruno Avenue location is ideal. Based on the neighbors closest to the development, myself included, it is felt that a two-story building with more off-street parking would be preferable. All buildings that will surround the development are two stories or less in height. Brisbane Hardware to the north is two stories at its highest point. All of the Visitation Avenue buildings to the west are two stories. The two hundred, uh, the Mariposa, the Little House on Mariposa Avenue and San Bruno Avenue is one story, and the majority of the homes on Mariposa Avenue are one story. A three-story building would be an overbearing feature in our cute and quaint downtown. It would unduly overshadow the residences and businesses that it abuts. As the Planning Commissioners said, the development will be located in a zone called the Neighboring the Neighborhood Commercial District Two, and one of the Brisbane Municipal Code ordinances pertains to the purposes of this zoning, one of which is number four, and that is to respect the histor- salute, to respect the historical scale and character of the area. And as of now, the scale is two stories. The top picture is from Google. It shows the buildings on Visitation Avenue that will be behind the development. The bottom picture shows a single-story home dwarfed by a three-story building, aesthetically pleasing, to say the least. The south side of the development will abut a single-story residence, much like you see in this picture here. The reasons for more off-street parking are this: Each unit can house two people. The two people might be a wedded couple, or a senior with a caregiver child over the age of forty-five, or a senior with a caregiver. With thirty-two residents, there could be an additional nineteen cars parking on the street. With four commercial spaces, that would bring at least four employees who must also park on the street. I find it surprising that parking spaces are not mandated for the owners or patrons of the shop, the shops. Then there are the visiting relatives, friends, and caregivers who will add more, more cars. And lastly, patrons of the shops will add yet more cars. And I have a question. Do you patronize shops where parking is hard to come by? I know I don't. This is what I've noticed when a lot of extra cars start to inhabit a neighborhood. You have to go outside of your usual parking zone and park in someone else's area. Then they in turn must do the same. Thus, I feel the development in its current design will lead to less parking, even on the streets that are up the hill from it. The worst-case scenario, given the possible numbers, is that you would have twenty-three and more vehicles parking on the streets, which would add to traffic, more noise, and more air pollution, ultimately bringing stress for the residents, including the seniors in the lovely new building. Please bear in mind that this number, twenty-three, does not include visiting family, friends, caregivers, or store patrons. There may, also, there may be a lack of revenue for the shops due to a lack of parking spaces. Title seventeen of the Brisbane Municipal Code has to do with zoning, and it states that "The purpose of this title shall be to promote and protect public health, safety, peace, comfort, convenience, and general welfare, and to achieve the following more specific purposes, one of which is to provide for adequate off-street parking facilities." Is it adequate when a large number of seniors or their spouses, family members, or caregivers have to find parking on already crowded streets? Is it adequate when shop owners need to schlepp their supplies from the street to their shops? Is it adequate if potential customers don't want to hunt for parking and trek to the storefronts? Also, under Title seventeen pertaining to zoning, is a chapter on off-street parking, and it states that in addition to the previous section, that the off-street parking requirements are included in the zoning ordinance to achieve the following purposes, one of which states "to provide for adequate off-street parking facilities by establishing clear relationships between building size and the parking required, so as to minimize parking impacts of development upon surrounding properties." I think as of now, the surrounding properties will be very impacted. I know that there is a particular exception to the general provisions provided in the ordinances, but in some cases, the letter of the law does not match with the intent of the law. I feel that the limited off-street parking allotment is a case in point. I ask you, does this development respect the historical scale and character of our town? Does it promote and protect peace, comfort, and convenience? Does it provide for adequate off-street parking facilities? Please act to preserve Brisbane's charm and wonderful quality of life. Ask that the development be amended. The decision that you make tonight will affect the fabric of Brisbane for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Next, we'll hear from the project sponsor, James Trotter.
Hello, Mayor, council members, mayor pro temp. Thank you for having me here. Let's see, can you guys hear me okay? Let me try. Is that, is that better?
Just speak loudly.
Loudly, okay. Get used to my voice on this. See, all you're doing, okay. Okay. My original thought was, I actually was going to go ahead and read the narrative up here. I didn't do it last time, but I thought it summarized the project fairly well. But to be honest with you, Ken did a great job of describing the project, and I want to address the appellant's concerns directly, if I can. I'll, I'll just read this narrative and try to address those, you know, what she's bringing up, and then we could, you know, if there's any questions. Let me go ahead and start. "By adding much-needed senior housing and reactivating some existing commercial space for the community, the proposed development revitalizes a part of downtown Brisbane that remains shuttered since Twenty-three Club was closed. Using the adjacent parking lot facing San Bruno, the proposed housing project includes both a secure parking garage and a set of one-bedroom apartments with direct access to a shared rear courtyard space, and also within a short walkable distance to Brisbane's shops and restaurants. Along with the main housing development, the existing Twenty-three Club facility will be reopened separately with access to the same sunny rear courtyard space. There are sixteen apartments proposed with wood-framed construction over a concrete pedestal deck that covers the garage. All of the units are designed for senior tenants with elevator access included to provide accessibility. Our revised proposal has evolved in response to input from the community. The design now incorporates architectural details to reflect a modest but eclectic quality of the downtown neighborhood, which includes features of the Art Deco style seen in some neighboring buildings. Also in response to the community, the club is to remain and will be reopened separately. Adding much-needed new housing will help the downtown area of Brisbane become the active town center the local community desires, and allows the Twenty-three Club to become, again, a thriving gathering spot for the city." I think, I mean, I really actually appreciate what the appellant is bringing up. I understand her concerns. And I think we've been very considerate in looking at the space in this area. I just want to show in this next picture some of the context, which actually she actually brought up as well. One of the things, the main driving points from the narrative that I want to bring up and point to, not just the project itself, but most of the towns in the Bay Area, small towns, are making an effort to revitalize their downtown areas, to make it a more attractive place to walk around, to shop, and also to live. And Brisbane is a very attractive small town, I think. There's a lot of people moving here, well, not a lot, I should say. They want to keep it small enough so they can enjoy a quiet life. And I think that's a good quality to have in a town, especially in a busy area like the Bay Area. But I think what is misunderstood, I think, about some higher-density housing in areas like this, is that the intent is not to bring more cars. The intent is to give people a place where they can live and walk in the area and enjoy the small town. You know, not building something beyond height restrictions, which this is not, is below height restrictions, that actually respects the scale and intentionally tries to bring in more people that'll walk in the area, live in the area without using their cars. That kind of goes between, you know, you want people to drive into the city, to go to the town, to go to the restaurant, or do you want people living in the city that can walk to the place they want to eat or shop? And that's kind of the issue at stake, I think. That's the thing to talk about, that is not easily understood, I think, for people that are used to having a car. And our culture's changing, where we're starting to want to walk more and not use the cars much. And we already have met the parking standards for this development, that is in zoning now, and that we have met that, and we have worked with the planning department to include commercial spaces well, to add to the potential shops. And one thing I want to correct with the appellant out, I'm not sure where the information she is gathering on this, but there's actually only two commercial spaces that are added to this project, not four. So even though that's really in some ways minor compared to the bigger picture, we, by adding two at least, we're honoring the desires of the city to add a storefront to the space, as well as giving the parking. And that's also what influenced how much parking spaces we have. So in order to have the commercial space, we had to take out parking spaces. I want to show you right here on these images that are important to discuss. Let's see if I have it. Here. I'll point it for everyone in the crowd. But if you look at these buildings up here, the apartment building here, and then the one that the appellant talked about, this whole street here has a scale that's two stories or two and a half, or three along this edge. You got Brisbane Hardware, which in my opinion is a two-story plus, if you look at the height. When we were designing the building over here, the garage is a little, which is purposely scaled it down as low as we could. And I'll show you an image later on that. But the intent really is to complement what's already developing on that street, that we believe is part of the overall town plan to bring more livable, walkable housing in the area that will work to revitalize the area downtown, without adding too much traffic to the expanded area of the town. Let me just keep going. One of the other things I was going to mention is that the space is unique, the plan is unique, in that the buildable part became the housing. Like Ken said, we have these two distinct structures, and then you have basically the rear courtyard here. This rear courtyard becomes kind of a central point for what could potentially be the two areas, you know, Twenty-three Club and the housing. But for now, it will serve, obviously, the housing and the garage and the commercial space below. But if you look through this project, we are intentionally trying to give things like this is an idea that I want to bring up, where the commercial space in front, if you look at the storefront here, this is an example of where we were thinking this, something like this, even though this is probably not exactly what will go there, this space is believe it or not smaller when it's closed up than this space here. I mean, and so this could easily be like a flower shop or something, could serve people in the neighborhood that won't walk to buy flowers, or have ceramics, like that's shown in the other shop. And it adds to the street. And you look at the rear courtyard, obviously, it's meant to be a place where people can relax. Now, I feel like they have to go somewhere else, drive somewhere else. They could stay in their building or go outside for a break in the, in the rear courtyard. I don't really need to go through the plans that much, but I just want to point out here, these two commercial spaces, those are the two. There's the elevator, that's the entrance to the building. You can see how tight the parking is already, with the trash, bikes, and this accessory with a bathroom required by the city, by, by the city, actually, that will actually serve for the businesses back here. You can see how the parking really is where it can be. There's only so much room for the parking. And it really is, in our opinion, we have maximized the value of this property and the use of it, in a way I think complements the city and the, the character of the area. So let me just go through the elevations real quick. You can see the elevations here. There's, this is the area where the appellant's home is. I actually, to be honest with you, I didn't know much about her presentation until tonight, so I'm just kind of going through this to rehearse it with you. But there's a house here, it's three stories in the corner, to the south. There's the house in Mariposa, the appellant's house, and there's a three-story structure here. So you can see that in this context, the smaller homes, and I, I'm recognizing those homes as being there, there's three structures, if we include ours, there'll be three stories or more, or three and a half on the left, if you look at the roofing. And then you look over here, we try to get this a scale on this elevation, but you can see how Brisbane Hardware is a little bit taller, in my opinion, with a taller commercial space in the bottom. Then you have two residential floors with a height that's not going to exceed probably eight and a half feet inside, probably more like closer to eight feet. And then you've got the commercial space below that has to adjust to the slope of the street. The main reason it even looks a little taller here is because of the slope, in order to have a level space for the garage. So anyways, I mean, I'm just giving you an idea of how this developed and how we really were working hard to make it work with the context. And we draw, drew in the styles, Art Deco as well, which I think is consistent with some of the things we see in the area of Brisbane that fit well with the context. I think that's really as much as I need to say right now, but if you have any questions, feel free to ask. Thanks.
Thank you. Questions for staff, for the applicant, or the appellant?
I have a couple.
Okay.
I need two.
And then after our questions, we'll go to the, the public.
So looking at the, the plans that you've drawn up here, and I'm trying to look for a number on what this would be, but I am not sure where the fourteen parking sp- spaces are. There's a portion that says six standard spaces, but there's only three slots. Are those tandem spaces?
Uh, no, I think, I guess I understand your confusion. If you look right here, that is a little confusing. There's three right here, three right here, that's six is all the way across. Does that make sense? Where my, the laser pointer is?
One, two, three. But it shows one, it-
One, two, three, the three on the other side are part of that-
And what about the line that goes through the middle of that?
Here?
Yeah, the next one.
That's a measurement line, Terry.
That's just a measurement line?
Yeah, 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 sorry.
Okay, because those didn't appear to be parking places when I was looking at it, because it, it, I was trying to find the sixth, the three-six to make the six.
Sure.
And then on the elevator access, the elevator is intended to be built, correct, during construction, initial construction?
Oh, yeah, the whole thing is built all at once. There's nothing-
And what is the ADA adaptable mean?
Well, that can be a confusing statement, but basically, it's meant to be for the bathroom, that there's a pathway from the businesses that you walk through the garage, and it's level, that goes to the bathroom, and all the utilities or sinks, toilet is for, compliance for accessibility, basically, for ADA compliant.
So it doesn't apply to the elevator access?
Uh, well, it also well applies to elevator too, yeah, but that really was not the, the elevator, that, that lobby is going to be level entrance from the, from the street, and there's ramps from the elevator going up to the parking, because it's a little lower in parking because of the slope of the street.
So does the ADA adaptable mean that it's not ADA compliant as planned?
No, no. When you, when I'm writing it that way, my intent is to say that it will be compliant, that, I was talking more about actually not the elevator. Elevator is already going to be ADA compliant. It's more about the units upstairs, because when you're working inside the units, in terms of, like, there was a discussion in the hearing with the commission that was a little confusing, actually. There was a confusion between someone that's wheelchair-bound and someone that's just simply older, or someone that just, you know, wants to have the, you know, the grab rails on this, on the bathtub, or other accessible things for their place. If you're completely wheelchair-bound, a kitchen has to be designed differently in terms of clearances underneath the counter. They usually don't have the counter space or the cabinets underneath. Things are designed differently for a completely wheelchair-bound person. So when I say ADA compliance, I'm talking about what the code says is ADA compliant. All of the units will be ADA compliant, but if it's designed for someone who's wheelchair-bound, it'll be even going further than required compliance. Does that make sense?
So the plans are only to be ADA acceptable to a- So the plans are only to be ADA acceptable to a certain limitation, but not for handicapped people?
No, I'll see, that's why I said confusing discussion. I, it, the code, state code will be all upheld for whatever is required for accessibility. But you have to go further actually for someone who's wheelchair-bound. And that's something that I think was confusing about the other discussion we had, if that makes any sense.
It does. I'm still confused about it, but...
Yeah, and I think it's our fault for the, using the wrong phrase there. I think, I don't want any confusion about whether or not we're going to meet code of compliance or for accessibility.
Okay. I wasn't even sure if the elevator was going to be installed at this point, you know, in the initial plan, the way it's worded.
Yes, yes.
It, it didn't sound that way to me.
Sure. No, I understand.
And, and then another question that I have is on the retail space, and this may be more for staff, but it seems that the retail is...
What drawing are you on, Terry?
I'm on the same one.
Oh, okay.
And, and they're not particularly numbered, at least that I can tell, maybe it's, it's A1, A1 dot one is the drawing I'm looking at, but it...
It's on the screen.
Yeah.
Yes, it is what's on the screen.
Okay.
Um, so on the landscaped open area that is on the, I guess, would be the north area?
Uh, actually technically it's going to be in the west, west, northwest. Yeah, if that makes sense.
The small triangle area.
Yes. Oh, the small one on the left, you mean? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Small triangle area.
So southwest.
Okay. I don't see a north on my drawings, so...
It's okay, yeah.
Sorry for...
No, no worries.
Not knowing my directions.
Yeah, I understand.
Is that area accessible or is that just a view shed?
It was meant mainly as a buffer where maintenance would be accessible for sake of gardeners. It wasn't meant to be intentionally accessible more for a buffer and for screening, but we, in the last hearing, we said we could make it accessible. It's the, the issue of that space is that it's actually above the level of the garage and we can't have direct access without steps. We, it's built up because it's higher in the actual grade, the existing grade compared to the garage itself. Is that, is that helpful?
It does. And, and so that would be where the other small home would be located on the other side of that retaining wall, basically holding the planted area.
Yes, and actually that's an interesting thing to bring up. I'll just mention real quick, we didn't get work out with the planning department, a concern with that house. We notched back this wall because the existing small house actually is crossing into the property line in terms of the survey. And we actually notched the house back, our building back so to accommodate the house because it's partly on our property. And we double-checked the house, we're not blocking, there's no real windows here except for maybe one window down in the lower section towards the street. And we made sure that we were separated from the structure. So it's sloping in a way that this is a little higher here than here, if that makes sense. And the house is right up on the fence here. But we are very, very conscious and considerate of where their house is.
Okay. And with that, that their property, their building, their structure is across your property line during the survey, is that going to be corrected with an easement or a property transfer to make that, that home conforming?
I would say, but I could talk, we could talk, we haven't talked about specifically, Ken and I and the planning department, I guess there'll be a discussion, but as far as we're concerned, there, because I think the owner has met with and knows the owner of that house, I don't, I mean, we probably could write something up just to make sure, but I don't think there's going to be, we're concerned about having an easement necessarily because there's no, that might be good for legal purposes, but we're, we're not, we're planning to build around it and not require them to make any changes, if that makes any sense.
It does. I just would wonder from legal on, on what implication that has on the setbacks or their ability to, you know, request a setback because they're not really legally entitled to some of the properties that they're occupying. So I don't know if, if legal staff can give any opinion on that.
So the, the structure that's, that's encroaching into the, the subject property, it appears to be added on shed by, by its nature of construction, that's what it appears to be. It's about, as I recall, nine inches over the property line. It's not a great deal, but that's an existing structure that I, I don't see necessarily unless the attorney, the city attorney has a different opinion on this, that, that there would be an easement required for them to continue. And with respect to the applicant's proposal, they're, they have a zero setback requirement on the sides, so they're actually in that portion of the building, they're coming off of their lot line a little bit to accommodate that building. So, so it's essentially that, that existing owner, should they decide to remove the structure, they could remove the structure, they can continue with it there without it being interrupted by this proposal.
Okay, and is the setback where they talked about having between one feet and 19 feet, I think you mentioned?
Uh, yeah, right there, yes.
In that triangle area?
Right. Right there, 19 and one, 19.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that because I'm terrible at reading these things. And then on a different subject, and again, this might be something for staff to answer for me, does the units that are planned here account for part of our RENA numbers allotment for housing or is it just the low and ultra-low units that would count towards our RENA numbers?
We would get credit for everything because we do have a above or a market rate requirement as well, plus the low and mod, so we would get credit for whatever gets constructed out there, meeting our totals.
Meeting our totals. I thought, for some reason, I was under the impression that senior housing did not count if it was designated senior housing towards those RENA numbers.
No, there's whole other categories of special needs, seniors being a special need, so, and that's captured in our larger RENA number. It's not typically as, it's not quantifiable like the low mod numbers, but we would capture that as meeting our, goes to our total RENA, but then we're also accommodating a special needs population of seniors. So we would kind of double count, but it would be categorized in that method.
Okay. And then on the, um, I won't, I won't find it, I did ask staff about this earlier so they'd be ready for this one. I asked if, in the language of the agreement, it talks about it being rental units and that it could be converted to condominiums and that it said it may not need to keep some of its low-mod housing requirements, but it would require being still senior housing due to the parking reduction. And I was wondering if that language was as tight as we could make it?
I think there's, that's condition number 34, I believe you're referring to.
Yes.
And I'd actually suggest a change to that language because it's not really clear that the processing that's involved is a, a use permit to, to convert. If you want to do a condo conversion, there's a whole use permit process and we would just make reference to that instead of the kind of more generic language that's in there, the applicant. Should they wish to convert, it would be subject to the city's condominium conversion permitting requirements.
And?
And, and, and the city does maintain inclusionary requirements for both rental and for-sale product, so those inclusionary requirements based on income would not go away just by converting it to, to a for-sale product. Those would carry forward in time.
And, and is that in our code?
It's in our, it's our inclusionary ordinance, yes. And that would be part of something, is part of the discretionary process that's reviewed by the planning commission. That whole thing about the planning commission may review this is, that's what's sort of not accurate in the condition as worded because the CUP for conversion would be subject to a planning commission review.
Okay, because, yeah, in item 34, it, it says, subject to review by planning director and city engineered, engineer.
That's incorrect.
And may be referred to planning commission and it just didn't seem appropriate that, that...
It doesn't reflect our current, no, it doesn't reflect our current requirements.
A ministerial thing instead of being something that, that enacted a little bit more process from the council or the commission.
Yes, we'd recommend that condition be modified to reflect the requirements set forth in the municipal code.
Okay. And I think at this point, that's the end of my questions for staff. So thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
I had one clarification for James.
Sure.
Thank you, James. On, I was looking at drawing A1.2.
Okay. Let's see if I can find. Yeah.
I just need kind of a clarification on, on the units because on the right-hand side, the lower right, you've got a unit eight and a unit 10.
They're actually, was that, oh, A and B, I mean? Or you're talking?
Yeah, the A and the B, but on it you have unit eight and unit 10. I'm not...
Oh, I'm sorry. I, you know, honestly, what we're doing, what we do is taking a sample plan from the project and we pull it out. That's basically one of the units in the plan. I just number them one through 16.
Oh, okay.
That's all it really means. That's just...
Yeah, I see the different, different measurements, but on, on there it almost seems like there's, I mean, just looking at it, you know, and just kind of doing a, a sight that there's actually three different size units instead of two, or is that...
Well, I, I know, I realize what the confusion might be. I, we really want to have a type A and type B mainly, the plans don't vary very much. They're, they're not that much different. And the main reason for showing these two different plans is really to show how the insides are organized differently. Like for example, if someone is, I think that when we're talking about wheelchair-bound, it's more likely we'd have the unit on the left, B, because there would be no island in the plan and it'd be easier to design it appropriately for accessibility in a fully wheel-bound, wheelchair-bound person. And the other one with an island is more kind of the plan that we were envisioning basically that have kind of a flow where you can sit at the, you know, the island itself and it's just a different interior plan. And the shell doesn't change that much, but partly because of the, you know, the regular pattern we had to have in order to work the scale and density on the site. And I think the main feature we really cared about, we said, along with the units, is how, you know, it's received on the street and also the interior space. We really didn't want to have an enclosed apartment building. You know, we wanted to have a court in the inside. It was important to get good light inside and other apartment buildings in the area are all enclosed. We really didn't want to do that in this situation. It gives more open air, more space than is normal in the area for apartments.
Okay, yeah. Thanks for that clarification, I appreciate it, ma'am.
Clark, did you have any other questions?
Uh, not for applicants.
Madison?
Yeah, I have questions. Some of these have been asked of staff already, but I think it's important for the public to hear the answers, but many of them I haven't actually came up with during the hearing. So can you, can staff give a description or the applicant, either or, of the nature of the commercial spaces? I know you touched on it a little bit with your, with your image, but I understand that there are two commercial spaces and I'd like to know a little bit more about the nature of them, what sorts of businesses you envision in them, how big each of them are, because I know there was something thrown around in the 400 to 600 square foot range, but I know that there's more like kind of this kiosk model too. So I really like to get a better understanding of what these commercial spaces are going to look like and what potential businesses are going to go in there.
I'll, I'll go ahead and answer first. I'm sure there'd be other input, but my owner and the people working on the project with me might come up and share about that too because there's a lot of discussion about the ideas for businesses. But basically you have, the one I showed in the image was really one taken from the Ferry Building in San Francisco. There's other projects like this that exist where basically you open the space to the sidewalk in this situation and that Ferry Building, it's a mall, open mall basically. But, you know, it's really draws people to have something outside to sell basically in front. And if you, as long as it's worked with planning, the sidewalk is a pretty wide sidewalk and we thought it'd be a nice place to spill out and, and if people walk from the corner hardware store or somewhere in the area and want to buy something that could work. The left one, this is negotiating the plan, but they really want to have a space and we thought we could get something that's more square, a larger space that somebody could walk inside. And we really didn't envision any, either of these being, you know, bigger. This one's about 250, 260 square feet. This one is the remaining of that 460 or so, but it's, it's long and narrow basically so you can open it up to the sidewalk. And because of the slope, you might have to step it down so there's two entrances, two areas for it. But this, both of them really in my mind were retail-like shops. I mean, you might have, you know, like snacks or something that are not prepared in a store like this, but there wouldn't be, I don't really think of it as something for food as much as it is something for, you know, like I was thinking ceramics, other kind of, you know, things people like to shop for in a small, you know, a kind of a walkable street. And I'll be honest, I'm blanking out a little bit, but I'm thinking, you know, it could be like, you know, there's hats are popular in some places, something that people would like to buy if they're walking in this, in a neighborhood and it gone to the, nearby and they wanted, if there's something, there's other possibilities, but to be honest with you, I think my, my clients would probably bring up some more because they had some community discussions about what ideas they had.
Okay. So you did say something that I thought was very interesting earlier. You said, you know, that the, including that 200 and something square foot commercial space did eliminate some parking. So can you just, if we live, let's say we, we're just going to play this scenario out just for the purposes of this discussion. If you remove that particular, the bigger commercial space, how many more parking spaces do you think you can include?
There won't be that much gain, to be honest with you. It has, it basically for sure one more space. I mean, it really wouldn't be that much more.
And why is that? Because it looks to me like...
Well, it has to do with combination of things. Some spaces are taken out because of handicap requirements. You have to have a certain type of, you have to have, the code requires that the garage be high enough as well as large enough in the parking, turning radius and everything for a van for accessibility. And a van's required to have eight-foot-two clearance, so on, on ceiling. So you're not only having to make space for that van here, but that has to be wider than a typical parking space for a car that's accessible.
Well, I'm not talking about that space.
I know, but I'm just telling you why there's not as many spaces. That could easily be another space if there was no handicap requirement, but we wanted to accommodate that. And then the space could be here if we push this out, this commercial right here. So potentially, but given code requirements and, you know, reasonable code requirements, we really cannot add more spaces than we have right now. And I think the city desires more commercial space and we wanted to honor that. So if you took that out, you really would be gaining for sure one more space.
Well, I think that's something we can get into when the time is right in, you know, 10 minutes or so when everyone's asked their questions and we've heard from the public. But I wanted, I want to circle back to that later. From staff, what is the building's side setback?
There's, through the chair, there's no side setback requirement for this district. It's zero.
Okay. And in other districts, does commercial tend to have a side setback?
Um, there, yes. For instance, Crocker Park would have a side setback.
Okay.
Zero point.
But not in this zone?
Different nature.
Okay, I want to talk more about those handicap spaces that were just mentioned. So... So I want to make sure that I'm understanding this right. So when I looked under parking from, it looks like the Planning Commission Agenda Report Attachment G, it said that there would be one handicap space, but that would count as a guest space. So one of the, out of the three guest spaces would be handicapped, and that would be the only handicap spot, correct?
Right, the city's parking ordinance actually designates that that one of the guest spaces, that that would be the handicap space.
Okay, and none of the other spaces would be handicapped?
That is true, and that's also ties back to the state building code requirement for a number of handicapped.
Okay, um, now, this kind of just dives right into it with this question, but there's been a lot of envisioning of what might happen if there are two people living in a unit, they both have cars, they have visitors, that sort of thing. So, and I'm pretty sure I I know the answer to this question, but I think it's important to discuss for the purpose of discussion. Can the property owner reject a tenant's application based on the amount of cars they have? So let's say somebody wants to rent a unit, there are two people, they both have cars. Is that something you can even ask a tenant about?
Lawyer question.
I don't think anyone wants to answer it.
Can we turn the lights up, Lee?
You know, I don't think vehicle ownership is is a protected classification of any kind that I'm aware of. But to be honest with you, I don't, you know, I would probably need to look at that issue to give you a more informed answer than that. But that's my sort of off the cuff.
I would imagine it would be possible, because, you know, in Baylands, I'm not going to get too deep into that, but there has been the idea discussed of a development with zero parking, you know, a whole development. If you want to have a car, you have to park it on the outskirts of town, and we've seen examples of this with, you know, developments that really focus on sustainability. So I would imagine there's some precedent somewhere where parking can be restricted in that way. So I just want to get down to the crux of the issue, because there are these scenarios being thrown around about how many cars can be brought into the neighborhood by this type of development, and wondering if there's anything in place that can be instituted to ensure that maybe, even if it was one, even if it was one car per per unit, that would still overflow into off to on-street parking. So if there is, I'm trying to figure out if there's like a way to look at the burden that would be on the on-street parking and try and, you know, address that as much as possible. So that's just something that we'll figure out, you know, just potentially. I guess that would be something, too, that would be up to the property owner, if that's something that they're willing to investigate or ask of potential tenants, correct?
Yeah, and I mean, I think that, as staff has said, I mean, this this project is currently configured, does meet the parking requirements under the parking regulations
Right.
in terms of the ratio. So that's something to to point out as well.
Of course. Okay, we'll get to more of that in discussion. I got my questions written all over the place. So I know that when I was talking to John on the phone, we were talking about Brisbane's requirement. It's point six seven for senior housing, correct? Per, point six seven per unit, if it's designated as senior housing?
It's point six seven relative to what the normal demand would be.
Okay.
And again, so that's tied to unit size and number of bedrooms for this particular project, you know, given that if it were a conventional project, it'd be one per unit. So yes, that's why it was tied to.
Okay, so I know you mentioned, when we talked on the phone, something that the state also has some sort of requirements, too, and that you can't, I guess, you can't require more than what the state would require? I don't know if I understood you correctly when we were on the phone, John, but what would, does the state have a special designation for senior housing, different from what the city would apply?
The state, under their density bonus law, has a couple of different provisions. One for senior housing, as the state defines senior housing, limits the would limit the ability of the city to require more than point five spaces per unit. However, this project is too small. It doesn't meet the state definition as a covered senior project. So if we're over thirty units, the city would be, or thirty-five units, the city would be obligated to basically allow point five spaces per unit, no more than that. We could not require any more. Since it doesn't have that, meet that straight size threshold, we can impose our standard requirements, which is point six seven at this point.
Okay.
There are other requirements that, again, just for income restricted projects, again, it's based on a number of factors, but we're not exceeding the state maximum requirement for the income assisted.
Got it. Okay, I'm going to save the rest for discussion. I think that's, those are all my questions. Thanks, Madison. Cliff?
You know, I know that appeal has, you know, cut into your time of being able to move forward with your project. But I have to say that I'm actually really glad that the appeal did happen, because I I think, you know, tonight and just, you know, prior to coming here, it's really showcased what affordable housing can mean in Brisbane. And, you know, it also gave you an opportunity to to demonstrate that you are sensitive, you know, to the area that you want to provide a a very comfortable and respectful living arrangement for seniors. And, you know, I I like also the addition of the commercial space, because I I think that's important for a downtown, obviously. And and this is where this building is located. So, you know, you know, the site used to be the parking lot for the Twenty Three Club.
Right.
The Twenty Three Club is, you know, a very, you know, fabled part of our 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 community, and I know that it's separate.
Right.
Though I I hope we have an opportunity. I know the the owner, property owners here, and, you know, would like to get an update on on that and, you know, how we can work together to to make that a thriving part of our community again.
Sure.
So, you know, when you have bands playing, they make music, and you know, one person's music is another person's voice.
Right, 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 right.
Right, and so what are you going to do to ensure that these senior housing units are buffered by the music that would be generated, hopefully someday in the near future, at the Twenty Three Club?
That's an interesting question. That's the first time I've had it here. I, to be honest with you, I think the way we're designing it, in my understanding of Twenty Three Club, because we did look at the building, I think when when it is reopened and activated, because there's intention to remodel it or clean it up, at least. The stage in the back of the house is literally, you know, backing up towards the that triangle area for the open space. I, my, my, from my perspective, I think a lot of the soundproofing and noise deadening would have to happen at Twenty Three Club itself behind the stage, because it's purposely closed off there. And it'll probably have to remain closed off with more sound buffering in the structure itself. In my opinion, the sound that will travel the most is going to be coming out in front of the building when people are coming out, not just in the music, because I used, I don't live in San Francisco anymore, actually, but I used to live in an area that was on Clement Street. If anyone knows this, there's a place called Rocket Room. They had concerts till two in the morning, and I was right on that street, and I didn't get a lot of sleep on the nights of the concerts. So I know it was like to have that noise. But the most noise was not when the music was inside, it was when people were coming out on the street after.
Congregating afterwards.
So in my opinion, a lot of the noise is more about what happens after a concert, and there's a lot of people on the street or going home or whatever it might be. And I think the reality is, in in the city, they had ordinances just to control how late they could be during the week. And the weekends, they allowed it to go later, obviously. I would imagine you'd do something like that here. In terms of the housing itself, I think things we can do are, you know, obviously, but sound deadening materials in the areas facing Twenty Three Club within the walls. And we'd probably do that anyways, to be honest with you, to make it as quiet as possible, but in between the units. And some of the windows can, you can increase the sound deadening, but it's only limited to what you can do in the window. So, you know, honestly, I think the best, the best you can do, in my opinion, is what you do with Twenty Three Club itself, like I'm describing. And maybe adding a little bit more vegetation on that side, it will help a little bit. As well as what we do with the sound buffering and inside the units and the walls, basically, for acoustics.
Okay, all right. So I know that you're not the one that that would make those.
Yeah, I know. I'm just throwing out my.
You're just throwing out your suggestion. All right, so, you know, maybe that's something that we could have the property owner come up, because I.
Sure.
You know, I mean, I, again, I I really like the project a lot, and I and I want there to be compatibility, you know, with the Twenty Three Club coming back and and enjoyment of the seniors, you know, living in that building. Staff, so, you know, we've talked about the handicap parking. Would there be a requirement to have handicap parking on the street? Because it's a senior housing complex?
No, there's there's no on-street parking requirement, although there will be parking retained on the street, but but that would not be required to be handicapped.
Okay, and if there was, I guess, a need that that developed, you know, through community responses, the site could, in the future, be designated handicap if if there was, I guess, enough, you know, input from from community members requesting so.
That's that's my understanding. I believe there are certain, even within the residential districts
Because I've seen.
where there have been handicap spaces designated. I I believe they go through the, request goes to the city engineer, and and then that can be striped that way.
All right, great. All right, thank you. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I have a few questions as well. I submitted my questions to staff, but it was this afternoon, so we haven't had a chance to get a response back. But they've had a chance to actually see the questions, at least. So, let's see. This might be a question either for staff or for the applicant. So since this project is intended for rentals, not condos.
Yes.
How would the owner decide which units get the parking spots, because there aren't enough for each unit?
That's a good question. I'd be honest, I'm not sure if I could answer that directly. I asked the owner to, my client to bring it up, but I, I mean, in situations like this, there, I I believe, and I don't really feel like I have a good answer for, a firm answer. They're re, they're usually set up as separate rental agreements for the parking spaces, not per unit, in a situation like this. So you'd have to be an owner of a car, obviously, and need the space. And the assumption, like the planning was talking about, is that most senior citizens, many do not want to have, keep a car, or not all, obviously. But and the assumption is that about two thirds would potentially need a car, and the rest would be okay without a car. So it's really going to be a need basis, basically, to reserve a spot and to pay for it.
Right, there would be a monthly fee, right, for the parking, so. Okay, and then for the guest parking that's under the building, how would that be controlled? Would that be only for, would it be like a first come, first served? Like, for example, up at Altamar, I don't know if you're familiar with that, we have some guest spaces, but they're not like designated for any particular units. They just say guest. So it's first come, first served basis, but how do you know, then, that it's not just a member of the public who's not, you know, visiting one of the residents or.
Yeah, that's a good question.
frequenting one of the businesses? Like, how do you control who uses those guest spaces?
Well, in this, in a project this, I'm sorry, this project this scale, I mean, it's not likely to be, well, there could be a manager on site, I don't know, but I really feel like that's up to the client and I to discuss later, but I think right now, my my assumption would be there's some kind of intercom security system to let someone into the garage.
Okay.
But that's usually the case in a lot of the projects I've worked on, there's some kind of security system to get in, because the owners usually have something for the automatic door to open it. And then there'd be an arrangement for someone to let them in through electronic, you know, you know, release of some sort. That's what I would expect, but we haven't really worked that out. So, I mean, I think there's.
Okay, so then the guest spaces, are they intended for guests of the residents? As opposed to people shopping at their businesses?
I don't think it was intended for the people shopping. I think it was always intended for the residents and the guests. But I think we, again, the client, I need to talk about that more, because I think we were trying to get as much parking as we could, obviously, and we want to address the needs of the tenants first before having people come in from the public to use it. We don't think this garage is big enough ready to accommodate outside, you know, people that are just coming in from outside that are not somehow connected to the residents, basically, themselves. I mean, that's my that's my input on this. We, I think the discussion has to be had about finally how we handle that.
Right, okay. And can you clarify for me on the the plans? So there was, the the three dimensional drawings had, if you could pull that up.
Oh, yeah, sure. Which one?
Let's see, that one.
Okay.
Okay, so the bottom left. So there's something coming out of the building that looks like an entrance to a garage. So can you clarify for me where the entrance is? Is that, is that that gray box, that square, or was the entrance actually between the two commercial spaces?
To be honest, the tree's blocking it right there. Are you, are you seeing where my laser is? The garage entrance you're talking about?
Okay, that's what I thought in looking at it further. So then, if that's the garage entrance, what is that gray box on the right?
I think it's the teen center.
Is that the teen center?
That's the storage area.
Is that part of the property?
That's not there anymore.
Be honest with you, we we rented that when it was there.
Okay.
So it's gone now. In fact, I was surprised to find it was gone myself when I drove by, so I, yeah.
That was the teen center, okay.
Yeah, that was the teen center, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and now I have a question about the courtyard. So maybe it might be a good idea to pull up the drawing of the courtyard.
You mean the plan, okay.
Yes, the plan.
Sure.
Okay, so this courtyard, you say, is going to be a shared space between the Twenty Three Club?
Yeah, I'll be honest, I should correct myself a little bit on that. The original plans that we developed were considering the possibility of them being shared. Right now, the idea is to keep this intact for sure for the housing development, but it's being discussed how the relationship would work with Twenty Three Club when that's developed, I mean, separately, the remodel. Because it has something to do with, and I think the owner should explain it, actually, but it can still be shared, but right now, it's meant to stay with the housing as a first, as the priority.
Okay, so my question was, if it if it eventually were to be shared, would it be considered a public space? So anybody coming into the Twenty Three Club could go to it, any member of the public?
If it was going to be shared at Twenty Three Club, it would, it could be. I think that's part of the discussion, because originally, this is going back to the beginning, we were developing without the Twenty, with Twenty Three Club included. We actually had some housing units in back of Twenty Three Club, too. There was a couple of units there. So the original idea was to have residents from both sides coming to that space.
Okay.
And it was mainly intended for the residents and people in the commercial space that want to break, basically, they're using the building. Twenty Three Club, obviously, they could have a large concert, and the question of how they use it would be something to discuss. But we were not, I think, at this point, my client was wondering if that would work effectively with that, because that space is really not designed for a large crowd.
Okay.
It's better for like, you know, ten to twenty people, probably.
Right, so I'm glad that my colleague, Councilmember Lentz, brought up the question about noise, because I had a question, not with respect to noise, but with respect to smoking. So, because we went through this whole ordinance recently.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
On, uh, smoking in multi-unit housing, and it got me thinking about how, um, what happens if there's a concert at the Twenty-Three Club, and people come out to the courtyard to have a cigarette, and, you know, that's right next to this senior project. Um, so, would there be any, um, capability, any mechanism for the city to put restrictions on the courtyard to limit or restrict or prohibit smoking in that space, since it is utilized by the seniors as well, and directly adjacent to where they're living, and a senior population is more suspep, more susceptible to secondhand smoke health concerns?
As I understand the ordinance, uh, the smoking ordinance, it prohibits smoking in common areas of multifamily projects. We would consider this to be the common area for this project, and the only exception is if the owner or the operator wants to designate a smoking area, then there are certain criteria in the ordinance that would, you know, set criteria, how far that has to be from units and doorways and whatnot. So, I think the ordinance as written would address that situation.
Okay, okay. And, you know, if people wanted to smoke, perhaps the Twenty-Three Club owners could direct them to the sidewalk on the other side on visitation?
Yeah.
That's where I think where they normally go.
That would be consistent with what I would expect as well.
Okay.
So.
Um, great. And, okay. And then, let's see. So, there, I, I watched the tape from Planning Commission, it was very helpful. Um, and there were a couple of questions that were asked by, um, Commissioner Greg Anderson that weren't answered, because staff didn't have an answer at that time, and I didn't see any reference to any further research on that in the staff report. So, um, like, what he, the questions you raised were, what are the parking ratios for the existing senior center? Residences, and has the city received any complaints from neighbors or residents in that location about parking scarcity? Um, to see, you know, just to get a sense of, you know, with our current senior center, how, what the parking ratios are, and, you know, whether parking is an issue for that part of the neighborhood?
Yes, so, with the adoption of the parking ordinance in 2016, prior to that, it was in City Council Subcommittee, and there was a, a study specific to that property. And it, it basically outlined, there's both, um, some parking surveys that were done, but also the units, there are fourteen units and fourteen onsite parking spaces. Now, the units are a little bit larger, generally, they're up in the neighbor, some of them are, there's actually two two-bedroom units in the mix on that site. So there's twelve one-bedroom units and two two-bedroom units. And, um, and the ratio is, is one, one to one. So it's fourteen spaces onsite, fourteen units. And then the parking survey, there were, uh, just three counts, and these were all done in the evening at, uh, seven-thirty at night, and it ranged from fifty percent occupied to sixty-four percent occupied.
The, the spaces that
The onsite spaces were at a fifty to sixty-four percent occupancy rate. So those were evening hours. I actually stopped by there at ten o'clock this morning and found five cars out of the fourteen spaces onsite.
So, seniors are getting out and about, then?
Right.
Um, okay, so, and were there any concerns raised by residents on, you know, San Francisco Street, or Inyo, or Visitation, you know, the surrounding streets near the senior center, about parking scarcity?
I, I have heard nothing specific to that area. I think the issues raised are larger, Brisbane-wide
Okay.
Parking concerns.
Okay, great. And my next question is, and this was, I think also raised at the Planning Commission level, was, um, they asked it there, but I'll ask it in this context. Does the council have any authority to require more onsite parking? Given that staff's opinion is that it complies with the ordinance, the, the city's parking requirements? Would the city have any leverage, any, any ability to, to require higher levels of parking, given that?
Yeah, um, Mayor, in, in our view, um, the answer to that question is no. You know, the parking, the off-street parking regulations set forth in pretty exhaustive detail what the ratios are. And we think, you know, that they are as stated here. There is a provision in the parking regs that allow for a downward departure, um, a relaxing, if you will, of the parking regulations if certain findings are met. It does not talk about, or contemplate, from my reading of it, the idea that, that something above these requirements could be imposed.
Okay, thank you. Okay. My next question is about the Twenty-Three Club parking lot. So at the Planning Commission meeting, um, people talked about, or, you know, some people expressed concern about the fact that this project basically takes away the parking lot that is existing, which serves the, which is supposed to serve the Twenty-Three Club. And I'm wondering if there's any data or evidence about how well-utilized that lot actually is, or has been in the past? You know, anecdotally, I, when I've passed by it, it's been pretty empty. You know, when I've gone to the Twenty-Three Club, I didn't, I wasn't even aware for a long time that there was a lot attached to the Twenty-Three Club on the other side of the building. So, you know, I'm curious, you know, what the impact is of taking away these parking spaces.
There's no sort of formal survey information, you know, in the record, related in the city record, so, you know, whatever information there is will be anecdotal from, from people in town who were here when the club was active and, and quite robust in its, in its activities. It's been kind of working at a much more dormant state for, you know, most of the time I've been here, so
Yeah, that's right.
Hasn't really generated a lot of activity.
Right, okay. Um, okay, and then, so at the Planning Commission level, there was discussion about requiring some additional conditions of approval, but then in the end, the commission just accepted the project without any additional conditions imposed. So, at this point, can the council, um, add any additional conditions of approval?
You certainly can, and, and just so you're aware, that those, they were couched as suggestions by the commission, and, and they have been shared, I know, between planning staff and the applicant, in terms of to try to address some of those concerns that were raised and take into consideration those suggestions.
Okay, great. And just to, to refresh, refresh your recollection and to let the public know, the ones that were notable to me were, um, looking at providing parking onsite for an electric vehicle, or, um, there was talk of, of a neighborhood electric vehicle, or an NEV, uh, which would be more for, you know, shared use going shorter distances.
Sure, yeah, right.
And I'm not too familiar with it. I looked it up and
Yeah.
Just did some research, but it seems like an interesting idea, because then, even though we're allowing parking and bringing a car, you know, to the site, it has zero carbon emissions.
Yeah, yeah. I think, actually, my client's really excited about that. We were talking about that, so, we'd like to do
Okay, great. And then the other suggestion was, um, having some, either landscaping, or some aesthetic um, blockage of that south wall overlooking Mariposa Street, so it doesn't look like so stark.
Right, right, right.
Okay?
Yeah.
And then the other one, which we touched on earlier, Terry did, about the ADA accessibility,
Sure.
Um, about what, you know, whether it's possible to require that all units be wheelchair compliant? I don't know what that does in terms of costs, or, you know, but, but I, but my thinking there is that, um, you know, if you're really trying to allow seniors to age in place, you know, you want them to be able to move in and stay there as they get older and their needs change.
Sure.
And, you know, I would think that, you know, if they go in without needing a wheelchair and they're mobile, one day they may need the wheelchair and it'd be, you wouldn't want them to have to move out just because of that.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think that's, that's a good thing to consider.
Okay.
Um, my next question is, um, so there was a comment at the Planning Commission about SB thirty-five, um, Scott Wiener's bill that got passed, about, I think this was, um, Mr. Diaz, that made this comment, that, you know, this, the projects like these, um, that, that the state is looking at through his legislation, um, you know, looking at eliminating parking requirements entirely if, if cities don't move forward with housing projects accordingly. So, now that that law has passed, would there be any impacts on this type of project with respect to parking requirements? If we didn't approve it?
So, the law has, has been signed. Uh, it does not take effect until January first, twenty eighteen. So it's, you know, it would really be speculative at this point to, to know whether it applied or not. I think your general description of it, that it affords a certain streamlining function for, um, for multi-unit developments, including, um, elimination of, of parking requirements if certain things are met. But again, at this point, without, without the, the legislation being in effect, it would really kind of be speculative to, to know what impact it would have on, on this proposal.
Okay. And also, so, the, the appellant, um, Ms. Gregory had, um, expressed her concern about the project obstructing her views of the mountain, um, from her house and her garden.
Okay.
Um, and there was discussion at the Planning Commission about, you know, well, is that actually accurate? Um, because her house is situated southeast, I believe, of the project, and the views of the mountain would be, um, southwest.
Right.
Um, and so, do we have any, um, comment from staff on impact on Ms. Gregory's views?
I think, again, as staff mentioned earlier, private view protection isn't really a, um, ordinance, city ordinance issue or requirement. You know, we looked at the idea, part of the design permit, you look at scale and mass, you know, the building is below the, the maximum lot coverage, it's below the, the building height. You know, we believe the design is, is fitting in the neighborhood and appropriate, so, but we don't get into a particular, you know, analysis, house by house, of how an individual's view might be impacted.
Right. It's, it's not like the, the last appeal we had about views of San Bruno Mountain being obstructed from a certain point. Yeah, that ordinance doesn't apply here. Um, okay. And then, okay, I think I had a question about whether we could restrict the number of cars, but, um, Madison covered that. And then finally, the public arts ordinance. So, it says in the staff report that this would trigger the public arts ordinance, so, maybe Stuart, do you have any, um, data on what amount of money, um, we project would come from this project, and has the developer commented yet on whether they want to install their own piece, or put it in an in-lu fund?
Well, to answer the first part of the question, for a project of this scale, it's one-half of one percent of the, the value of the project, or the construction cost. And we don't have any estimate yet from the developer what the pro, project cost would be. And we haven't had any conversation about them, whether they want to do onsite or in-lu, and contribute to the city fund.
Okay.
As a follow-up to that, perhaps, um, if it's, if it is decided to be public art on the property, it has to be available to the public, correct? Not on their inner courtyard?
Yes, it's got to be, it's got to be, it has to be visible from, for the public.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
On a street side.
So where would that go?
I, I mean
Go on the corner of Mariposa and Inyo?
There's a number of different ways that people have done public art in other
You could put it on the building, too.
You could put it on the building. It could be part of the facade of the building.
Otherwise
A mural on that wall.
Yeah.
Facing Mariposa.
Actually.
Otherwise, it could be gi, given to the city, and the city could place an art installation, you know, some, someplace else where it might make a little bit more sense than like on the side of the building, or on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Right?
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think it would be, you know, when we get to that point, it would be good to have public input. Um, and then you had mentioned that you've considered revisions to the project, so are those revisions, you know, in talking with the community? So are those, are there any revisions since the Planning Commission approved?
Well, actually, to be honest with you, I, I, I think I was talking about the revisions that had to do of coming to this point from when we were trying to combine properties.
Okay.
But, uh, to be honest with you, the only thing we really looked at, at this point, was, um, there was some, there's a couple of other questions that had to do with heating units, and we already, we looked at one already. Um, but that's not really pertaining to the main question here, and, um, we've, but I think the main thing we looked at, and we probably will work on this, but it won't require, in our opinion, revisiting it. It actually will probably shrink, um, a little bit, a little bit the, the side on Mariposa in terms of the, because you want the wind in the air to flow through that courtyard inside. The main reason we even have any solid mass on the e, ends, basically, when you see at the ends of the, of the project, have to do rebuilding requirements for egress. Like, uh, we were actually told late in the process that they had to be enclosed, uh, for exiting, basically. So, that's part of our development, is trying to open that up as much as we can.
Okay, thank you. And one last question, so, um, to staff, um, we've been, you know, talking about ways that we could discourage driving and encourage walking. Do we have any ideas based on what other cities have done to, um, incentivize residents to make that choice not to drive? Any, any sorts of tools that we could put into the project? That aren't already here?
I don't think we've identified anything that's kind of a regulatory requirement the city can impose. I mean, things you've talked about here, like unbundling the parking, providing, you know, if the applicant's willing to provide certain availability to car share, or, um, you know, other services, um, you know, transit, you know, there are all sorts of things, transit passes to residents, all sorts of things that, that, um, you know, could be done to attempt to incentivize it. Part of it, I think, is the idea that, um, you know, the idea of you creating kind of a more of a complete community at the end of the day, where people can fulfill more of their basic needs, you know, where they don't have to drive. I mean, I think that's a longer-term kind of objective here, and sort of building up the downtown, so it provides that range of services.
Okay, great, thank you. So, with that, um, I'd like to have the public comment. Would we like to take a break before that, or does anyone else have any questions?
I have a couple more questions
Okay.
Um, that, for staff, if we could, and then I'm happy to take a break.
Okay.
Um, I did ask staff to provide what, uh, low and ultra-low, um, housing prices were for a rental unit based on current condition and salary, um, income levels, and I believe staff has that information. I unfortunately left my computer at home, so I don't have their response that they gave to me.
Um, again, the rates, and it's all kind of approximate, but it's based on twenty seventeen San Mateo County income data for median area income, and for a, it's all, again, based on household size. So, for a very low one-person household, the income level is forty-six thousand dollars a year, approximately. The monthly rent would be eleven hundred, maximum monthly rent would be eleven hundred and fifty dollars. For a very low two-person household, low income, a very low-income two-person household, annual income about fifty-two thousand plus, and about thirteen hundred dollar, uh, rent, monthly rent. For low-income one person, that annual income's about fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, monthly housing, a rent would be thirteen hundred and eighty dollars. And for two-person household, annual income about sixty-three thousand, which would translate to a rent of about, maximum rent of one thousand five hundred and eighty dollars.
And, and if, did I read those figures correct, that that includes utilities?
Yes, and any other monthly fees that would be associated with.
But that
If you're going to charge for parking, you probably, for a low or very low-income, you know, unit, you'd have to include the parking cost in that as well.
If you were guaranteeing a parking place?
Yeah.
But if you're not, if they're doing paid parking, um,
Required to pay for it, yes.
If they're required to pay for parking, then that wouldn't be included in those income levels, I would assume.
Yeah, as long as it's not a mandatory charge.
Okay, so they could opt out of buying a parking place, or, or having that included in the rent. And then to come back to the parking question, um, with the guidelines, you needed point six-seven per unit plus three guests needed .67 per unit plus three guest spots. Would they be able to rent all the spots under there, or will they have to leave three spots not rented, so there is guest parking?
They would need to have three spaces available for the use of guests, so
Okay, so, three unchargeable spaces, and the rent on the spaces could be anything they market rate. It's not anywhere fixed into the pricing. And then, one question, and you may not have this till you come back. I wanted to know what density this project is, the way it sits now, per acre?
I have that in the Planning Commission report. I can double-check, but I believe it was about 72 to 73 units an acre, right in there.
So, very dense?
Denser than many, but there are a few, actually, there's a handful of other sites, actually, one that's in one of the images here, that's up to 100 units an acre. That's at the, just two properties up at the corner of Mariposa.
The old hotel.
The old hotel.
Yeah, well, that's
And, and there's a couple others that are at that similar density, or slightly higher.
Okay, no, that's not very practical by modern standards. So, I think those are the questions I have until we get into discussion, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Councilmembers? Nope? Okay, with that, we'll take a five-minute break, and then resume with public comment. Thank you.